All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session Tuesday, April 23, 2024. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Time Enter, Chair of the Board. Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Vice Chair to my left, and we have Commissioners Gary Edwards, Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Caroline McKee participating by Zoom. We're here for an hour and a half to review next week's proposed agenda. We'll take a quick break at that point. Will we be on the same Zoom for the planning? No, we don't have a Zoom for the planning session. So the Commissioners will be in a planning session, which will be open to the public here in the boardroom only, starting at 10:30. For public virtual attendance for this meeting, you can follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. County Manager, uh, sorry about that. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager Rob Gallagher. Pretty soon that'll start flowing out of time here. And let's just start off with our draft agenda for the April 30th, 2024 meeting. Kickoff at 2:00 p.m. as usual. Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Fornier. Approval of the agenda and then a presentation for proclamation Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Yeah, I'll hand over to Amy. She'll give an overview of those.
Lynn Hawley of the Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition, South Dakota Sound Chapter, co-chair and program director, has confirmed their attendance and acceptance for the proclamation, and she was reaching out to a few of their members to join her as well. And they will provide just a few words if we have the time next week.
Yep. She's appeared before and always has good updates for us, so that'll be great. Questions on the proclamation? Okay, um, there'll be an opportunity for the public to address the board. County Manager update? Anything anticipated?
Not at this time.
Consent items, we have five proposed. 3A is central services. Lease amendment extension between Sheriff's Department and J4 Associates.
Yeah, well, Richard, good morning. Thanks for joining us.
So this is the lease extension in the Sheriff's Department and J4 Associates for another one-year extension while we still plan for the relocation.
Just for the FOB, they call it?
Correct.
The levations here?
Yep.
Questions? Anything in terms of the terms?
Same exact terms as before. Nothing's changed, so yeah, another year, same exact price tag, everything.
We are committed to a whole year with no ability to terminate the lease early, but that was the best deal we could get.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Item 3B, emergency services. Professional services contract with Olympia Emergency Services, Ben Miller Todd, Emergency Services Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good day, Ben.
Awesome. Uh, this is our, uh, I would say MPD contract. Um, just so you're aware, this is our contract with Olympia Emergency Services. Uh, within the description here are the major points that have been updated. Uh, I would say the major point that we increased was we went from about a percent and a half per year to 2% per year in the contract and changed the duration from two-year increments to three-year increments for the initial period to end December 31st, 2027, and then allow for another three-year extension after that. Uh, this has been reviewed by the prosecuting attorney's office and the internal auditor, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Oh, and this was unanimously supported by the EMS Council in the budget development process. Thanks.
Questions?
Thank you.
HR is the next item, 3C, resolution to reclassify positions.
Yeah, do we have someone from HR with us? Cover those items? Okay. So these are items, several positions that are being reclassified. And the detail of the positions are in the attachment A. There looks like there are a total of different positions, and some are title changes and some are title changes, and then with that change, there's a compensation change as well.
So these are, I'm just gonna jump in.
Please do.
Um, these are the positions. Uh, you may recall a few weeks back, um, the board reviewed all of the requests that had come into HR for reclassifications and changing of positions. And you had at that time asked that for all of the simple one-off um, reclasses that HR had reviewed and agreed with, for them to come forward. We're not holding them any longer. Um, so this is the list that you reviewed of those that were ready to come forward. Um, every office and department who has a position on this list will absorb the costs until the next budget cycle. So this is the progress that we had talked about.
Commissioner McKee.
Thank you.
Can we make sure your audio seems a little bit garbled? Maybe a lot.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that was better.
Okay. Um, okay, I, I was wondering how, um, Robin, can you please connect the dots for me and kind of the budget amendment that got, um, and we received an email from the auditor last night as well, but I just, connecting those dots between the budget amendment that was requested and this decision point by the board right now or at next week's agenda and how they correlate?
Specifically for the auditor or for, um, items?
Yes.
During that? So the auditor's positions aren't just being reclassed. The auditor is requesting, and, and I do apologize, I did not read all of the emails that we received from the auditor. Um, but I know that she has requested, um, the, uh, salary adjustment for a particular class. Um, that is part of the comp and class and the direction that you gave, you, the board, gave to HR was to implement the approximately five classifications that we know are under market, and that is one of them. Um, so that is in progress in HR, and we would have to check in with Maria to see exactly where that's at. Um, the request for the removal of an end date of position, again, not a reclassification. Um, that is a position that the board specifically approved to work on ARPA um, and has been paid in part with ARPA funding. Um, and that the auditor is now requesting to become a permanent position um, doing, uh, tasks, including some work on ARPA, but also many other items. So not a reclassification connected to this action. Those are the two items I'm aware of.
Okay, so are those, I, I guess my question was like, are those items included into this?
No.
Request?
Not, not on the request before you to do the reclasses, no.
Okay, and that is going to be brought then out of the later date by HR?
Those items, uh, the, uh, the auditor is requesting the, the, remember the compensation conversation we had?
Yes.
Yes, that there's a difference between reclassification and adjustments to compensation. And what the elections classification needs is a reset of their compensation. That is something that HR is working on. The removal of an end date is part of your budget amendment requests. That is not coming through HR.
No, and I get that, that one, but there were, uh, I, I was wondering about the elections ones where they were in the class and comp study that have been,
languishing.
That's the one.
Yeah. So, so that is something that, uh, HR is working on, and we can certainly ask Maria about that when we see her later today.
Okay.
What about the, um, the, there was a position that I thought was a one-off position related to the WSU extension assistant to the director?
Thought that we had taken care of that one, but they need to absorb the cost. The, the deal, if you will, is that when a reclass, um, is mid-year, that the cost is absorbed, and that is part of the direction that the board went with. You didn't fund any of them, as you know, um.
So they're not willing to absorb, or they?
I would have to review that particular one, but when it came in through the budget amendment, they were asking for additional funding, and they really need to absorb the cost. It's not that the reclass, you're not saying no to the reclass. You're saying absorb the cost of the reclass, just as you are for everything on this list. We'll make sure that that is included here.
What was the position title?
There's a WSU position that they wanted reclassified.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lewis.
So how many positions is this going to be today that we're doing?
Uh, this takes care of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 11.
And those are going to be absorbed within whatever division they're in?
Each office or department that requested it, yes.
And what is the dollar amount that that's going to be? And my concern is, not that I don't want to do this, but my concern is, do we have enough to include that into next year's baseline? And then how do we budget for that?
That is an excellent question, and one of the things that you all asked us to work on is a method to bring these forward in bundles in the future with the estimate of ongoing impacts. We don't have that for the ones that you're about to take action on today. Um, you had instructed HR to go forward with these ones. Um, but in the future, as people come in and ask for them, um, the intent is for HR to bundle, uh, the requests come in no more often than once a month with the ongoing impacts.
When, when you say that we don't have it, you know, numbers, do we have any rough idea what it might end up being? Because we're going to have to think about this, like you say, with each one of these new proposals.
We can definitely do the math on this and report that out to, um, the board.
Well, we can, we can get them an estimate.
Yeah, don't have to be.
But it's a little difficult because some of these positions are vacant. Um, and when you hire in, you don't know where in the range it's going to be. And even be, even if a position is being reclassed, it doesn't mean that the person in it, if it's a filled position, will automatically get an increase in pay.
Right.
It just raises the range. So for example, uh, there is a position in Superior Court that's being reclassified from a program manager to a senior program manager. At the top of the range, the difference is $1,041 a month. It's not as if the ongoing cost will be $12,000 a year, but it, it could be.
A high and low.
So, yeah.
Yeah, some, just something, so we, we're not given a blanket approval to something we have no understanding about. And my next question on this particular topic is, and we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago. And I'll use the county manager's assistant position as an example. When that became vacant, one of the big reasons for that vacancy was we weren't able to keep those wages at a particular level that was competitive. And we're trying to get that fixed. Does something like what you're referring to here, as we move on and start lumping those together, is that going to fit, fix those deficiencies? I, I think even a week ago, we might have talked about, uh, different positions throughout the county where the new person coming in is given more money than the person that's been there a couple of years, and that's causing a retention issue.
Right, so no, this, these actions won't resolve that. I'm not aware of any action that would resolve what you're talking about now. Um, the, so the idea that someone who's being recruited might come in at a higher step in the range than an existing employee is just part of the, um, hiring process, and there's, uh, other than, quite frankly, the, the solutions that I can think of are not really feasible. Um, so the, the board could pass a policy that you can't hire anyone in at a pay that's more than any of your existing employees, and you would instantly create a barrier to recruiting. Um, the, the pay that is offered to a new employee should be based on experience and education and fit for the position. And a really good manager is going to take that into account and assess where they fit on the scale. Some of them will have more experience and education than people who have currently been on the job. Um, so I guess that while some people may view that as an inequity, I don't because salaries should be based on what the new person is bringing to the table.
And I, I think if we had a job force available to draw from, you're probably right. But where we don't have that, and we're unable to fill positions, we either take a chance of not providing the service to the public or doing something else, I guess, if we can't fill the positions.
That ability to place someone higher up the range absolutely addresses a tight labor market and, and our ability to fill a position.
But it doesn't prevent that, uh, I'm going to use morale, I guess, as an issue, and retention. Because then those other individuals, you haven't solved much of a problem if you have two people leave and you hired one. So I think whatever the situation is or the solution is, I think we need to put more effort into that.
It's part of the balancing act of a manager, and this is a conversation that I encourage you to have with your HR director.
Well, maybe amongst the Commissioners first before we get to the HR.
Of course, but, but I think that Maria can inform you better than I could.
Great. Maybe we can talk about it in a planning session.
She'll be here. It's a good thing to bring up.
Are we removing this from the consent calendar?
I, I'm not asking you that it be removed. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it, but I'm, I'm hoping for discussion.
So I'm, I have more questions. So I'm, so there's all these reclasses, and we were trying to make sense of them and put them into boxes, and so now I'm kind of hearing it different breakup boxes. So we had, we had a filter of, you know, things that were related to the compensate, that had basically connections to other, and then we had the, what you call the one-offs. But now I'm hearing within the one-offs, there is a group that agreed through some process, I, that hopefully everybody understood, that they would absorb versus other ones that are asking for budget amendment. And I guess, and you're saying that you're in, you're assuming that if they made a budget request, they're, they were unwilling to absorb. And I'm just wondering, I want to make sure that that was clear. If that's, if that's two groups that we're creating, and was it clear to everyone, you know, that it's either or? Or because I can't imagine, and I'm, I'm only picking on the WSU one because I remember it. There could be many others that I'm not thinking of. I just happen to remember that one as kind of a one-off that we all agreed is pretty valuable or pretty, you know, needed. So why, why, why isn't it in this group that we're approving is what I'm trying to figure out.
So I don't know that the position is not in this group for you today.
There is a WSU position included in this action that, um, changes a senior office assistant to an administrative assistant.
I think that's what we were looking for.
Is that the one?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that could be the WSU, and they may not have understood that the direction was to absorb, but that's what we've been doing for these the last 14 years.
Okay, I just want to make sure we get it there. If it's supposed to be in that group.
Yes, we, we do want them to have the reclass. They just don't, you know, they need to figure out a way to absorb the cost.
Okay. Well, I'm good to keep this on this consent myself.
Can I, Commissioner? Commissioner Muntzer, can I, can I ask a clarification with the WSU position that you, I didn't, I don't remember seeing that on the budget amendment. Was it there?
It was, I, I would have to look.
I don't remember either.
So I don't, Commissioner, I don't believe it was a budget amendment. There was, if you recall, several weeks ago, there was a list of all the various reclassification requests that came, have been submitted to Human Resources. And then those were, um, broken down into basically the various buckets. The first one being those which could follow our normal process because it did not change or did not rely on a change to our class and comp system. The proposed changes were just moving to something that we already have in place, and so.
Yeah, and, sorry, uh, I remember that conversation. I was just, I guess, trying to like understand whether like Commissioner Muntzer's questions were coming from a, a request that was made for, for additional funding. I, I just got confused on kind of, uh, that line of questioning. I thought that was a request from WSU. Uh, because I just didn't remember seeing that during the budget amendment. Um, I remember the classifications and kind of what we approved, um. So.
And I just want to make sure, Commissioner Muntzer, your question about making sure the process is clear as to what this action is doing and if it's, if I. if I, well, this isn't what you said, but this is my thought, if it's merging two processes, the amendment plus a previous conversation that was had.
They're two totally separate things.
So what is this item then? This is not the amendment then, this is?
Not the budget amendment, it's just reclassification of the positions.
Okay, if you think of it like last fall, it was like we had this like glut of reclasses while we were struggling with a, with a, trying to make budget cuts. And so we, we kinda deferred. Meanwhile, they keep piling up, like, it's like, they just keep like piling up. So then we've got this pool of reclasses that we paused in the fall, and we're trying to make sense of it. How do we, with, with no, with no, with flat revenue, no additional resources, but yet a lot of different needs, you know, varying degrees of, of, of a time sensitiveness and value to the different, you know, requests, how do we make? Plus, we had a class and comp study that we had looked at and not done anything with. We're just trying to figure out, how do we make sense of these and get them moving in, in clumps that had logical? That's what we've been struggling with for a few months.
So then this approach is we're moving them forward because we're telling the departments, you have to absorb costs?
That's right, and that's our normal process.
Yeah, that's not anything new, what's kinda new is that we, we were sort of looking at ones that like, well, and Rob just said, like, okay, if you've got ones that need new classification work to be done, or they're tied to the class comp, or if you do this.
Thank you.
You're gonna affect different departments' classifications than we look to HR.
I know they've been tracking this conversation, I was in another meeting, so I might need some.
Bring you up to speed. We're looking at the agenda item on the reclasses. And the conversation is, well, Commissioner Minster was giving an overview of how we got here and that in the budget process, there's a lot of folks that requested reclasses, we didn't move forward with them, and now we're batching them and moving forward with them. And then there were some questions about certain positions, making sure they were added in there. So, welcome to the conversation.
So, which positions are we talking?
Oh, I, I just was asking about the WSU administrative assistant. And the reason is every time we have this conversation and we don't move that one forward, I get an email from Mr. Bramwell, and I need to be able
Ungratefully so.
And I need to be able to explain to him why this doesn't go forward in the next batch because I thought we had gotten to a point where that one was going forward, so.
It is, and it will be absorbed in the 24, 25 by nail budget.
So, I believe it's a, a position 27R00741, Senior Office Assistant to Administrative Assistant.
Under C.
Okay.
Okay, oh, good, well then, but then we got into the question of, you know, why this 11 versus the others. Commissioner Mihia had a couple of questions, Commissioner Edwards had a couple of questions, just trying to understand the process that we're, that we're.
So, some of this analysis had been done, and some of it we were able to complete to batch. So there's another batch that staff is working on. You know, we haven't, it's a kind of a new process in terms of batching them so that the board can see the bigger picture. We haven't quite fallen into a cadence, if it's gonna be once a month, or it's gonna depend on your board meetings.
Commissioner Mihia was asking about, I think, auditor elections positions.
Right, and that's where we got back to the conversation about, is it a reclass or is it adjustment to compensation?
That's a adjustment to compensation, because they're in the union, we have to negotiate those changes with them. And mid-May, I think it's May 21st, is our meeting with the Courthouse Union Group to talk about this first phase of bringing to market those positions that were found to be lacking.
Thank you, Mary, that was helpful. And to the comment or the question that was made about our, is this process, do the departments know that, about this process and are they aware of how to get the positions reclassed?
So, I never sent out a global message, but between staff and myself, because there was a few of these that I worked on. We did reach out to the request doors that were sitting patiently waiting for some notice, so
Okay.
it may be helpful if, for some kind of messaging to go out, and I think we were kind of strategizing.
Said more work in it.
Yep.
And maybe at a later date, we can talk to the commission about ideas for retention. If there's areas in the county where folks are leaving positions, on our brainstorming hat, to come up with some options for the commission to consider about, what are ways to retain employees, et cetera.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else for Maria while we got her?
I'll be back.
Thanks for coming down so quickly, really appreciate it.
Okay. So we have then, we have 3C covered for this morning. We'll go to Public Health and Social Services, item 3B, lease with Capital Recovery Center for Drug User Health Syringe Services Program.
Katie's online?
Katie Strozick, can you give us an overview this morning?
Yeah, definitely, thank you. So this is an extension or renewal of our current lease. We've currently been at Capital Recovery Center for over 10 years. It's where a syringe services program is, as well as our hepatitis C and HIV rapid screening program. Through our lease, we have a space for our actual syringe service program. It's like a small office or a large closet, depending on how you would classify the size. We also have a large space to do our HIV and hepatitis C rapid screening, as well as case management, and then a large space in the basement for storage of our different supplies as well. This is continued at our current rate, current terms, everything like that. It's just a renewal, and it would be from March 2024 through March 2025.
Questions on this?
What budget is coming out, would be my question.
Yeah, so we get grant funding from the State Department of Health. It's allocated from state funding through the governor's budget, and it fully covers our lease amount. It's harm reduction, provides own money.
No further questions.
Thank you, Katie. Next up is item 3E, Auditor Voucher List, week of April 15th. Any questions on the board? Okay. Item 4A, Public Health and Social Services, Contract for Submerged Aquatic Vegetation Activities for Lake Management Districts.
Stuart is here to cover the site.
Commissioners, so this is a, a project for submerged aquatic weed management for our lake management districts. We did a request for proposals sometime back. We received two proposals. Aqua Technics was decided to be the best proposer. So, that, and the cool thing was that each LMD actually scored those independently, and then we met and we had consensus pretty much immediately on that. So it was good, it was a good process. So, we've negotiated a contract with Aqua Technics. We've really no significant changes, so we're just asking for approval to execute that contract and have our public health director sign it.
All right, we just one question. Where's, where are we at as, on this, hit with one of the residents at Lake? I'm just gonna let it go at that. Are we making headway on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've been in contact with him, he calls me, asks questions, I answer his questions about, I think he feels like he's, I think he feels like he's in the know, and there's nothing we're hiding, so we're just giving the information, and that, that's what he needs. And, and we keep telling him that, you know, for these aquatic weed management plan, plan for Patterson that will be developed, he'll have multiple opportunities to comment, you know, on that plan. And, and so I think he's, I think he feels about the situation.
Included to a degree or something like that?
That's what we've been intentionally, intentionally doing.
And this is a, a contract that all four can avail themselves of. It's a fee-for-service basis that basically, as they develop their own respective work plans that may or may not need to utilize these services to execute those. It does not predetermine any particular activity or work plan item for any of the lakes, including Lake Patterson.
We had a meeting this morning where Lawrence and Long Lakes during committee said that as of right now, they don't really have a weed problem. Which can change, it depends on the seasonality, the temperatures and conditions, but they, the good news is that right now, there, there isn't an imminent need to do any kind of management of weeds. It'll come, but it's not, it's not right now.
So one of the, you know, the controversial pieces is the glyphosate, use of glyphosate. And my understanding is that that is not used on submerged.
That's my, that's my understanding as, as well, yes.
So this board's action here, even though it's not predetermining a particular work plan, it's not any kind of authorization of the use of that chemical for that purpose.
Remember that the, the Integrated Pest Management Committee, I think that's what it's called, has approved a prescription for this activity, which is very specific. It even calls out the use of glyphosate only in very certain controlled situations. So, we think we're, we're in good shape, and most counties don't have that level of specificity that we do, so I think we're.
Any other questions for Stuart?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is also Public Health and Social Services, Professional Services Contract, T03021323. Whatever that is, Gretchen Tolliver. Program Manager.
Good morning, Gretchen Tolliver, Public Health and Social Services and Community Wellness. And this is our, it's a renewal, renewal of our professional contract that we have with Lewis County. And this is a contract in which they are purchasing NFP services for, for Lewis County. So, many of you may remember, but for, for our new manager and others, we, our Nurse-Family Partnership Program is a three-county regional site, so Thurston is the hub. And we employ the nurses, and we serve both Lewis and Mason County as well. So this is, in Lewis County, these are the local one-tenth of one percent funds that they use to purchase some NFP time.
How long have we been doing this?
Since 2018.
Any other questions for Gretchen?
I just appreciate the additional background about Lewis County, so when I saw the item, you answered one of my questions, so I appreciate it.
Right, yes, great, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Gretchen?
Yep.
Public Works is next, item 5A, Contract Award for Asset Management Information System Needs Assessment and Requirements Documentation.
I think this is an exciting step forward, so go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. And I have also on the
Sherry.
Sherry, Sherry, thank you for joining us, Sherry is actually in Puerto Vallarta right now. But it was important that she also be here as well, because this has been a coordinated effort with IT, and so I just wanna make sure that the board's aware of that. So, what we're asking for is to do a contract award for our asset management information system. And this is for a needs assessment and requirement documentation. So I've mentioned previously that we use Viewworks, we've used Viewworks to manage our assets for a little over 15 years. That system is no longer serving us well, and at this point, we are at a standstill with that system. We use that to record the maintenance and repair activities on our assets, plan and schedule work to maximize efficiency and effectiveness of assets and perform our asset lifecycle analysis and to replace assets at the optimum time, guard against asset failure, and ensure continuity of essential operations. We have worked with IT, identified that a needs assessment and requirements documentation consultation has been identified as our first step in determining what that new system will look like. So that is what this request is for, we went through and did a request for proposals, we had two bidders. The evaluation was done by both Public Works and IT. The highest, or evaluated, selected Barry Dunn of Portland and had the highest rated proposal, including the lowest price as well. So, rated the highest, and they actually were the lowest in the cost of the two. It will be funded from the various funds within Public Works that manage those assets. Solid waste, roads, stormwater, utilities, parks and trails. You saw that there was a budget request, a budget amendment for parks and trails to move forward funding that had been previously allocated in 2022. So that was part of the budget amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good explanation, I have no questions.
Pardon me.
Pardon me.
I'm Dad's family's home. It's a cool place.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Hey. Thanks, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thanks, Sherry.
Okay, Public Works continues on with 5B, Interlocal Agreement for Anti-Icing Materials Sales for Road Operations, Tomwater School District Number 33, Mike Lowman, Road Operations Manager. Straight to, to Mike?
Yep.
Straight to Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. Public Works is asking the board to approve an interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the Tomwater School District. The purpose of the agreement is to provide a mechanism by which Tomwater School District can purchase anti-icing materials from the county for road operation purposes in order to allow the parties to make efficient use of their resources and for the benefit of the public. The board may remember late in 2023, we brought forward similar agreements for other local entities that asked to use anti-icing materials from the county. This is another one, exact same agreement for the city of Tomwater, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Sounds straightforward. I'd like for you to go, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, item 5C, Public Works Striping, Repeat Purchase, Matt Hugelmann is here.
County Road Engineer.
Thank you, Matt Hugelmann, County Road Engineer. Becky Conner, Traffic Engineer, will be presenting this next week. Public Works stripes approximately 600 miles of roadway, which requires 12,000 gallons of yellow paint and 15,000 gallons of white paint. So write that down, that's a good stat. The paint lines on the county's arterial and collector roadways are refreshed on an annual basis to meet federal reflectivity law. Public Works intends to piggyback off Pierce County's competitively bid contract for the paint, which meets the technical specification requirements for the rapid dry waterborne currently, that we currently use in Thurston County. The key words there are rapid dry. When it comes to putting paint down on the roadway, we wanna make sure that we get the paint that's gonna dry the fastest. And that's, and that's gonna eliminate a lot of the claims we get from people who get impatient and don't wait for traffic control and cross over the white or the yellow lines. The Pierce County contract meets all of the procurement contracts. The unit rate for paint these days is $16.05 for a total cost of 4,000, excuse me, that would be a steal. So to summarize this request, Public Works is requesting that the board of county commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a contract with a RAMSCO for $423,474.
Questions for Matt?
7,000 gallons of paint.
You know, the good thing is we have paint to buy this year, because it wasn't,
Yes.
it wasn't too long ago during COVID. We were putting buttons all on pretty much the entire lengths of roadways, because we didn't, we couldn't buy any paint.
Yeah, it was one of those blockchain things, no paint.
Do we use reflective beads in there?
Yes, so, we do, there's a state spec that we do five pounds per, I'll have to follow up with you next week, but yes, there's a certain amount of reflectivity beads that need to be included in the paint.
It's super interesting.
It is.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
What's that?
And I can tell you enjoy it.
I do, it's one of my favorite things we do.
You should take a, a ride along with the painting crew.
All right, Matt, you're here for the next item?
I am.
Okay, Resolution for Temporary Closure of Black Lake Belmore Road between Black Lake Boulevard and Sap Road. between Black Lake Boulevard and Sap Road.
So last month, Public Works did a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on upcoming projects that would require road closures. Since then, the Board of County Commissioners has approved road closures for the Green Cove Culver Replacement Project, as well as the Waddle Creek Culver's Borough Replacement Project. This item is requesting permission to close Black Lake Belmore between Black Lake Boulevard and Sap Road to accommodate the construction for the Black Lake Ridge Approach Repair Project. The approaches near Principal Creek have settled more than two feet due to peat bog. This closure would be up for, would be for a period of up to twelve consecutive weeks between June first and October thirty-first. This section of Black Lake Belmore has an average daily traffic of around forty-six hundred vehicles per day. A detour will be provided. The detour length is four and a half miles and will take approximately eight minutes. A communication plan to notify stakeholders such as local residents, emergency responders, school districts, nearby businesses has been developed. Notice of the closure will be published in one issue of the Olympian in accordance with state law. If this item sounds familiar, it should be because I brought this before you last year and the Board of County Commissioners approved it, but we couldn't get the piling secured in time to complete this work, which has to be done in the summer months because there's a gas main that goes through this vicinity and that gas main can only be shut down during the summer months when the usage is the lowest. The good news is, is we have a pile of logs in Rainier, Oregon, which is just across the river from Longview, that is waiting for our contractor to come pick the logs up and we should be good to go this year.
Did the road ever get closed last year or no?
No.
Okay. Any questions for Matt on this one?
And all those logs are long enough, they're going to get bed down on a hard van or bedrock.
Yep. Some, and some portions, we have to go sixty-five feet to get burying. Other portions, we're going forty-five feet.
How many pilings are going on?
Five hundred and forty.
Why? This is going to be cool to watch.
Oh, this, the bridge.
You need to start hanging out.
I know.
I think this location is the exact border of our districts.
Yeah.
You're going to have to drive it a few more times and jump the car before you fix it. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sheriff's up next, and I saw Sheriff's seat. Item six A is Single Source Purchase Proposal Grappler.
Good morning. I think we kind of restarted, so I don't know. I guess I'll just go straight to questions since we presented on this a couple of times now. If there's any need to keep telling you guys the same thing over and over again.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions on item six A?
Do want to add one thing, though, that we, after the meeting before, we asked for, or Board asked for some estimates on how much money is paid out for damages. So I got with Fleet Services and in two thousand and twenty-three, in pursuits, we had eleven vehicles that were damaged at a total cost of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. This year alone, in two thousand and twenty-four, we've had seven vehicles damaged in pursuits so far and it's roughly eleven hundred, or a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars that have been spent on repairs for this year. So we just wanted to add those to the statistics on that.
Still got eight months to go.
Hundred and thirty-one in, in two thousand and twenty-three, and then what was the number so far?
A hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred this year.
So obviously that's way out in terms of.
To reduce the vehicle damage, these tools are essential to that.
Commissioner Klaus?
Yeah, so I've been wondering about this since we talked last. I was wondering what you will be using for like training purposes to ensure that this item is used safely.
Part of the purchasing of them is the companies will come and actually do a training day and it will teach our personnel how to use them. They'll teach them also how to install them. So that will be something through Fleet Services that will join up with them as well. They will certify our personnel at Fleet Services to install future systems on the cars. But they will also teach our own instructors as well. So it's part of the training day that is encompassed with purchasing either product.
So what?
Apologize, go ahead.
I was just going to say, every year we train emergency vehicle operations driving with our staff. They spend a ten, ten hour and forty minute shift going over classroom, pit maneuver, high-speed driving, low-speed driving, backing. And this will be encompassed and part of that for whoever. So with only buying five or six units, the whole agency isn't going to get trained. We're going to, we're going to teach our E V O C instructors how it works and then those individuals will train the people who actually have these installed on their cars. We don't need someone who isn't going to be using it to be trained on it at this, at this time. But basically, it'll be a train the trainer type scenario where the companies will come out. They'll teach our E V O C instructors how it's used. And then those E V O C instructors will become our own trainers then at that point in time for any other future training installments. One of the things that I'm trying to get done, we are doing a second E V O C training this year. At the end of May, we are updating the pursuit policy and we're also doing some more practice with pit and things like that. My goal, it's always been a staffing funding issue, but I'd like to get to the point where we are training our driving stuff three to four times a year. Because we do a lot of defensive tactics training, a lot of firearms training, but we don't fight and we hardly ever use our firearms when we're out actually going on calls, but we drive to all of them. And that's where most of the risk and liability is for the county is the high-speed driving. So I'd like to get to a point where we're training that, that E V O C stuff four times a year. But right now, the only tool we have to end a pursuit is spike strips, which, you know, most, a lot of the police officer fatalities over the last couple of years have been from deploying spikes. It's not a safe, a safe thing to do and the pit maneuver, which causes damage. So these offer some alternatives to those, those techniques, sorry.
Oh, no, my apologies. I'm just going to remind the Board that, that you will be here tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock for a briefing on these two items.
What, how does the projectile work with the Star Chase unit?
After request of Commissioners.
So the, it's a little.
Yeah, to prove these.
Bumper mounted device, it's got two shots in it. When the lid flips up, when they activate it in the car because they're in a pursuit, it also activates a little laser aim dot so they can aim up and down as they're pursuing the vehicle for that short distance. And then you get two shots, basically. It's adhesive. So the projectile shoots out. If you see the videos, it's not like a bullet. It kind of shoots out like a little lob and it sticks to the bumper. And then when that's activated on our screens and for dispatch as well, they'll be able to monitor where the vehicle drives. So the idea is you can turn the lights off and kind of just monitor the area. And then when the vehicle comes to a stop, you can then, you know, most of the time they're going to bail on foot. But that's what we just bought another dot for, so.
With the grappler, the. Is there, so I can imagine that if it, you described how it works, when it works. I can imagine that, you know, if it's, the challenge is just knowing how to maneuver and get it, like, you know, to, to grab or whatever. Is there any, like, are there any, like you were saying, the, the spike strips are dangerous? Like create this, like, is there any dangerous, like if it's, it's used? Like I can't really imagine how it would create a risk. It's on, on the flip side, like if it goes wrong, like what happens? What's, is there something that makes it dangerous if it's not deployed correctly or?
The only thing I can think of based on the physics of how it works. So basically, it drops the net down and then you drive up under the car. It wraps up the axle and then it's got like a tow cable, like a suspended tow cable. And you have the ability, right? Like, like if I'm in a small car and I use that, or if I'm in, let's say I'm in a, an F one fifty, which is a little bit lighter as a pickup truck. And I use it on, you know, a tow truck that flees from us, we're probably going to want to disengage and not hang on to that vehicle because it's just going to drag us down the road. The only scenario I can really think is if we lock it up and then we let go of it immediately and it just locks up the rear end of the vehicle, then it's going to come to a sliding stop. So you can think of some environmental issues where that could be a problem, right? I mean, if you deployed this and locked it up and then up ahead is a T intersection and it locks up the vehicle and it slides all the way through and crashes, that could be a potential, a potential issue. But most of the time, when you see how these things are used, you know, pursuing that tow truck is going to be a problem no matter how you spin it. And you're probably not going to spin it just based on what we've seen recently with pit maneuver attempts on tow trucks, so.
We have a lot of fleeing tow trucks.
We had one before I became the sheriff and we damaged four cars, totaled two of them trying to stop it. It was a carjacking that ended up ramming a police officer, so we chased it. Yeah, it, it was a problem. And same thing with that F three fifty, F two fifty that we chased. So there could be scenarios, but honestly, the way that the whole mechanism works, the entire thing is designed to grab onto things and hold them. So I'll argue that it's much more safe than a pit maneuver where you are at speed, shifting the back end of a vehicle and aiming it somewhere off in the distance because every time you pit, you're aiming for something, whether it's off the road or into the oncoming lane.
And part of the training, the deputies are going to be trained to take into consideration environmental. You know, if you're right next to a cliff or something or you're coming up on the intersection, like he says, that isn't going to be the opportune time to do it.
Some of your acronyms you use, like E V O C, can you tell the public?
Yeah, Emergency Vehicle Operations. So course is what the last piece stands for, but we, you know, E V O C instructors, they're the ones who do all of our driving instruction for our, our staff. So anyone who is going to operate a motor vehicle that has emergency lights on it has to go through the training all the way up to, to me as the sheriff.
Any other questions on this item? You kind of segued, the next item is the Star Chase item and you. Boom. Got a road Commissioner phone. We've got a, you answered some questions on that. That one sounds even safer in a sense. It doesn't, it doesn't stick, it doesn't stick, no one's hurt, no harm done. If it does, you've got a way to make the whole pursuit much safer context.
Yeah, the, the Star Chase is one of those ones where the big question is, you know, does it stick? And there's, there's been different studies out there. I think that what we're going to find is that in inclement weather, it does a little poorer and in nice weather, it does a lot better. But, you know, one thing that I've been trying to do is diversify our ability to stop cars. That's why we presented on a helicopter, it's why we presented on Star Chase, the grappler. It's why we have spike strips, it's why we train in pit. We have a T V I, a Tactical Vehicle Intervention piece in our policy that allows us to disable vehicles. And so all things to get, all these things together, I think, create a diversified approach to stopping these cars before they hurt other people. And so this one, I think particularly is attractive to me for all the stolen cars that we're experiencing right now. Because the, the issue that we have with stolen cars is that people steal the cars and use them to commit other crimes to avoid being caught. And I always feel really bad when we pit a stolen car and, you know, we give someone back their ninety-two Honda Civic and it's in three pieces. Whereas with Star Chase, you're able to tag the car and then the most damage you get is the sticky adhesive that you got to, you know, rub off with alcohol prep when you're done. So the ability to do that, and then, you know, there's other scenarios for these things too, you know. I'll just go ahead and say, you know, if we're chasing a homicide suspect, we may tag the vehicle with Star Chase so that in the event we do lose it, we can still track it. But there could be scenarios with some of those really significant crimes. We're going to tag a car with Star Chase as insurance policy, but we're still going to pursue that car because even them being out of sight for, out of our sight for, you know, ten minutes is going to be a problem. So for the more serious crimes, it'll create an insurance policy that we capture our person. And then for all of the less serious crimes, it gives us a chance to tag the car and back off.
Commissioner McHugh was, got knocked off the Zoom, but she wants me to ask if the internal auditor has given thumbs up on single source because that's kind of the.
On, on both.
On essence of the Board's decision-making here.
Yeah, we have those, we don't have the contracts, though.
Okay, so answer to that is yes. Any other questions on item six A or B?
I just like to say, okay, so you're over a hundred thousand in damages. So this is going to be how much for the taxpayers that are listening?
It's up to under a hundred. It's fifty thousand, a little under fifty thousand for each set. So for five Star Chase systems, under, about forty-eight thousand and then for six grappler systems, about forty-eight thousand.
Like we discussed last time, there's going to be another grant opportunity coming up this year for the alternative technology. We missed out last year, we were twenty-two. We ranked twenty-two in the state and the first seventeen agencies got money. Those seventeen agencies this year are not eligible to get the money again. So the plan, the hope was that if we can start making our own purchases on some of these things as a pilot, that we can build on those. So we can go the next, you know, four or five months, see which one of the, which, which one of the two is most effective. And then if we can get some grant money awarded, we can try to outfit as much of the fleet as we can with those, with those tools.
Commissioner Klaus?
Yeah, so I just had one last question. It sounds like we'll have another briefing on these tomorrow at two and the packet looks like it includes some overview and cost info. But I was wondering if we have a copy of like a draft purchase agreement that we could review? I think I asked for that one of the last couple of times that we received a briefing and I don't know if I received that or not.
So I've asked twice on that, what exactly that needs to look like? And I have not heard a response. So I'm, I'm waiting for a response on what a purchased agreement looks like. We've never had a purchased agreement before.
Or had a contract to purchase items?
Not, not through sole source.
Okay, who are you waiting for a response from? Is that from the?
Parry. Yeah, yeah.
The Budget Office.
Okay.
I do, I do have two, two bids, one from Star Chase and one from grappler. I could, I could send those, though.
We can send the bids.
I don't have a contract, but I have the bids.
Sure. Yeah, our templates are for purchased services, not equipment that's out there that the Contract Office puts out there for us to use for these things.
So I can certainly provide you with the template if you.
It's, it's not out there. I, I mean, there's a purchase service not for equipment.
But we do have the bids, so. And the auditor has approved the sole source case.
Okay, any other questions? And.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you so much.
Next up is Superior Court Toxicology Services Contract for Superior Court Programs. There's someone from Superior Courts, there we go. Serene Craig, Program Manager, give us an overview of this item. Good?
Good morning. The Superior Court is asking that the Board approve the Services Contract, the Professional Services Contract between the county and Aber Test, who is actually Aber Health. This contract is the product of a recent R F P for Toxicology Services that we just concluded and Aber Health is the selected bidder. One thing to note on this contract is that the initial period is for fourteen months instead of twelve. And that is in an effort to align this contract with the funding source, which is our Criminal Justice Treatment Account, M O U with Public Health for the therapeutic courts. So it's a duly funded contract with Treatment Cell Tax and Criminal Justice Treatment Account, the bigger part of that being the Criminal Justice Treatment Account. So that's the dates if you're wondering.
Commissioner McHugh?
Thank you. Have we been in contract with this agency before?
No, we have not.
Okay, who did we do business with before?
We are just concluding the contract period with Horton.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, Serene. Standing items then, we'll finish up the agenda for April thirtieth and that concludes that review. Looking at the next item is Proclamations and Awards. We have pleasure the Board any ideas to walk us through anything that. Who's there?
The proclamation for Asian American Islanders Heritage Month is included, I'm sorry, day. It's included in your packet. Again, Lynn Harley, Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition, South Puget Sound Chapter Co-Chair and Program Director will attend to accept the proclamation along with the other members of that chapter. No further updates on that proclamation, but I have received two proclamation requests. One received from Duncan Green of Inner City Transit. One received from Duncan Green of Inner City Transit for Bike Month, and one from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for National Drug Court Month. Both of those are for May. We do have two meetings in May with two scheduled proclamations, one at each meeting. I recall in the past, Bike Month has been recognized and included as a presentation item, and the Chair of the Board read a, just a few remarks. And so it was a presentation item on the agenda, but it did not include a full proclamation. We do have a proclamation included on the consent agenda for May seventh at the request of WASAC to proclaim May thirty-first as Executive Director Eric Johnson Day. So with that, there's a few options if you'd like to consider those in addition to a full proclamation. Would you like to include either of those?
There is Bike Month, there is Drug Court, and then there is Eric Johnson Day?
Yes.
Sorry. I, so they did the farmer's market, Bike to the Farmer's Market this Saturday. I, I like going, but, um, I think, I like Amy's suggestion of maybe just the Chair just kind of recognizing, right, Bike to Month, if that's, I mean, not to
No, I think that, you know, these, I think that you'd have, it would be my inclination to send a response saying, the board sets the proclamation schedule in January for the year, we'll keep you, we'll, we'll add you to the list for twenty-twenty-five if you, if you so desire, but we don't add proclamations unless it's in, you know, the Eric thing's different in a sense, because it's, you're always gonna have this, not an emergency, but something that wasn't contemplated necessarily in January, so that might be one we could talk about, but, you know, Bike Month. Kind of missed it, though, they, they do, they do Bike Month every year, and like, this is like And we've done it before. And I, I'm sure it was probably on our list for consideration.
It was on our list.
Yeah, so we decided not to do it. If there's any basis to reconsider that. County hates bikes. Headlines tomorrow. If you go down that road, the whole meeting will be proclamacious. Yes, I know.
Same for Drug Court Month as well.
I mean, it's the same for me, but I
How about Eric Johnson? I don't think we need to do, maybe just signing a proclamation and giving it to him at the retirement or celebration on the fifteenth?
Yeah, absolutely, happy to do that.
Instead of actually reading
Can't go to thirty-nine counties, right? Of course, he lives here, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I, I could be talked out of it, but it's just my first, my first reaction. I tried to set up the process and keep them, you know, a reasonable number, that started with kind of going through at the beginning of the year.
I agree with you, Chair, I'm kind of soft, so I'm like, I'm gonna squeeze it in.
But I'm happy on any of these, or especially the bike, you know, that we did in the past, if you have a paragraph, and I could tweak, I could work together for me to do a recognition at the front of the meeting, it's fine. I, I don't know, like, bike, I don't know, I always feel like Bike Month is like something that you can almost set your clock to, and, but, I mean. This is May?
Are you renting your bike?
My motorcycle bike. You sure Edwards, where are you at?
I'm not, I'm not dying over anything, you know, or
I'm not gonna die on this hill, but, yeah.
So I think just going with your suggestion, honestly.
So Bike Month, recognition by the Chair. Anybody else tries to sneak any proclamations on the rest of the year? I'm gonna use your argument.
Let's just not do Bike Month or Drug Court. I mean, that way, they're both equally, right, we decided at the beginning of the year. I think if we're gonna do that, then we should just do it.
Okay, and then for the Eric Johnson issue?
I think instead of reading a proclamation, we'll just sign
Provide it to the ceremony.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be there, so I could personally give it to him. That opportunity.
That one is included on the draft consent agenda of May seventh.
Okay, anything else for there? Then let's go to Advisory Boards and Commissions.
The current recruitment closes on end of day Thursday, April twenty-fifth. With the help of the PIO team, the recruitment has been shared on social media and in our newsletters, and I appreciate the board's assistance in recruiting for the two salary commission vacancies. We cannot focus for that one, but no further updates or applications left to share at this time.
Talk to them about it. Civil Service Commission, what is that, we have to do on that one, or are we having to fill that before?
Uh, it is, there are three members who sit on the Civil Service Commission. No two members may be of the same political party. They must reside in Thurston County for two years prior to appointment, and so currently we have two seats filled.
And I, I'm, people have told me that they've applied for some of these positions.
I've received, I think, one application for the Civil Service Commission during this recruitment, so I'll bring all of those applications to the board on May seventh.
Okay. Okay.
Can we get more information about the Civil Service Commission? I, at least, at least for me, I
No, we can round that up.
I just, I feel like
Maybe we'll do a briefing sheet for the whole board.
Are, are you looking for like a background on what it's, what purpose it serves?
Yeah, I just, I don't know anything really about it, and
I'm making sure, I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, making sure that whatever its purpose is aligns with the information on the website about it, because it seemed like it was a disconnect. If you read it, it sounded like they overview all Sheriff Department hiring decisions, which, when this thing They vet the process. So that needs to be clarified, because, I mean, I can understand why citizens read that, and then in, in, in our controversial hiring thing that just happened, they'd be like, why would, why? So this got a thumbs up from the Civil, and that's not exactly their role. Thumbs up is about the process that you hire somebody through. So I think that forward understanding and then alignment of the, of the written materials on the website is warranted, make a misunderstanding amongst the public.
This was one of the ones, or, I mean, I've heard, I've heard the sheriff talk about it, I've heard people talk about it, but it wasn't, I never really connected the dots, because it was like not in-my-wheelhouse kind of situation, but I feel like if we're gonna be appointing people to it, I would like to have a little bit of better understanding on what the rule is and
I'll react, probably do that, right?
Yeah, we'll put together, we'll work with staff, put something together for the team, get that out.
Gary was here when those rules were implemented in the thirties, and he couldn't hire his cousin.
They're a bit antiquated, you know.
A bit antiquated.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Items is next, we have about fifteen minutes left in our schedule. The first item up is tax title property cleanup. And who's leading us on this one?
This is not
Good morning, Commissioner. Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm back again with another issue on a tax title. This is for abandoned homeless encampment cleanup on a tax title off of the Chehalis Western Trail. I believe the address is off of Sandmar Drive, kind of back behind Public Health. There's pictures in your pamphlet, and the cost is just over sixteen hundred dollars. And I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Gary, you wanna make a proposal?
Are they from Kansas City or what?
No, I'm just saying, usually you'll be like, I'll go out and do it for
Yes, Commissioner Klaus, go ahead.
You said this was an abandoned property, are there any occupants on the property currently?
No, there are not.
Okay, do you know about how long there have been no occupants on the property?
I'd have to look back to get you an exact date, but I know it's been at least four or five weeks.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, I have one more question. Who's verifying that information? Do you have any agencies or nonprofits going out there regularly to check?
Keely did go out and verify that it was vacant, and since then, my staff has, have, uh, went out there a couple of times to make sure that no one has moved into it.
Okay, thank you.
What, what fund would we take the money out of?
General fund.
Why couldn't we take this out of our, uh, one-tenth, one percent that was passed to deal with homelessness?
Our one-tenth of one percent?
For the housing, the housing fund, sales tax.
It's directly involved with that type of thing, I think, that we validate expenditure.
Well, our home fund is tied with the Regional Housing Council, right, so any kind of
All of it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So all of our, any kind of requests would have to go through them, and just because we have
And I don't know that cleanup of a property would fit with providing household services.
I'm not gonna break my big gum, I'm breaking through.
Okay. So what is the
So the request is approval to go forward with the cleanup.
It's not on the agenda for legislative approval, you just need a thumbs up.
That's right, it's information today, and then we'll put it on
It's too small, the item to
It is, it is a very small amount. And today's information, and we can put it on the decision list for Monday.
I have a question in terms, not, not this property. But as the year goes by, I'm wondering if it would, if it would be wise for the board to set aside some funding for these kind of cleanups and situations, dead trees? Because I, I mean, there was one year where I think it was, I don't know how many times Jason was here, but he was here quite frequently, bringing up situations with dead trees, and, you know, even if it's just, you know, twenty thousand, that it's set aside for kind of these situations.
So we have a, an analysis, it's rather old, but I do have it, where if the board earmarks money specifically for the cleanup of tax title property, then the county is taking on responsibility to maintain all of the tax title properties. So if we take these as a one-off when something is identified on them, as we have been doing for years, then the county can follow the portion of RSW that says that the county is not responsible for maintaining these properties. That's why we don't earmark money for it.
How, how about on this particular issue, with, with the abatement fund? I, I'm just always trying to protect the general fund, so would abatement fund?
So we set up the abatement fund so that that money can only be used in the event of a court order to clean up property. So no, this does not qualify for abatement.
So what, can we just leave the garbage there? Because there's garbage in about ten thousand other locations around the county that should be cleaned up.
Didn't you say we received a complaint about this property?
Yes.
Well, uh, we, I received complaints about all of the garbage around the county that we don't seem to have the resources to clean up.
It's on tax title property.
I'd never know for sure.
This is tax title property.
So the county owns it?
No, the county holds it in trust.
Gotcha.
Oh, we can clean it up, as opposed to some private property, you can't just go on there and
Correct.
Okay. I missed PIO check-in, so I wanna go back. Nothing? Okay, any questions for Megan? Okay, sorry about that. Other Commissioner Items then, before we wrap up.
Thank you, Jason.
Anything we wanna hit before we break for planning session?
We start that in ten minutes, don't we?
Travis is here to check in with us, any questions? Legal questions did not come up today, to my knowledge. So thank you for checking in with us, Travis. It's ten twenty-one, then we'll adjourn, we'll be back at ten thirty with, uh, planning session.